Okay.
Good morning, welcome to the February 19th meeting of the Board of Selectmen here at Memorial Town Hall. First upon the agenda is, do we have any public announcements?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a reminder, a public hearing on appeal of building inspector's issuance of a permit to Hatfield Solar, which was postponed from an earlier scheduled time, is now scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, at 6:30 at Smith Academy. Second, Board of Selectmen have a whole range of appointments pending to various committees and boards. We're trying to close that by the end of March and encourage you to apply if you're at all interested. And the third item, will be more about this discussed next week when we have a gentleman here from Pine Valley Planning Commission, but we're going to be a public hearing on the 19th of March regarding an update to our community development strategy. And this is a requirement of a grant submission that relates to Center School. Anyway, CDC or CDS rather is simply a document summarizes of various planning documents and kind of our goals for the way ahead. The hearing is a formality, it's a requirement, welcome any input however, we're only looking at making some minor updates to the one that was just completed what three or four years ago and we were doing the Hatfield redevelopment, Technology and Business Park. Anyway, that'll be on 19th March with more information at our next Board of Selectmen meeting. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next we have, it doesn't look like it, but I'll bring it up, Community Forum, doesn't look like anybody's here, so we'll get right into the minutes.
Motion approved Board of Selectmen minutes of 22 January 2013.
Okay, motion made, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have the town accountant. Yep, if you'd come up here.
Let me preface this for folks to recall, a few months back, we asked Mr. Lyons to come in and kind of review with us recent audit the community had. Out of that, there were several actions, accounting manual, internal management control program, more periodic reconciliations with various departments, those kinds of things. And he was scheduled at that time to come back at this point, kind of share with us where he is resolving or addressing those various findings from the audit, so Mike's here to do that today.
Hey, I apparently misled some of you at last meeting after I saw the memo from Jeff to Paul about the Rita heads. That I didn't mean to imply that I have all these done by today, but just to have a review of where I am. So although I have most of them either procedures set up or have them done, with the exception of number eight, which has to do with the accounting, financial policies and procedure. The internal management control program, I must, I probably haven't given you a copy, but I gave that to, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, I gave it to Mr. Scanlon, he was very happy with it. So that one, I think, is done. And I'm about halfway through the accounting, financial policy procedure. I got the people on the north side of upstairs, the financial people, treasurer, collector, myself and the assessor. And I've got a few more departments that have any contact or receipt of money coming in. And when I finish that, then I have to do the risk assessment report. And then from that, I'll be able to prioritize items for monitoring in the future. But what can I say, the GASB 45 and 54 are set. And we've got procedures in place for contracts and bids and contract and grant awards. So that folks send me a copy of them as they're issued or finalized. The reconciliations, I continue to meet with Marie Brenda and Ron Williams in the Food Services Department. Enterprise direct costs, I have that done, capital assets. I have a project for Jenny, she's in Texas this week. But to go back through invoices, I'll just do a printout of the invoices paid. And depending on the amount of the invoices, I'll just have her go check the invoice and see if it's a capital item. And she'll take a copy so we can give it to Mr. Scanlon. And then the timely submission of balance sheet in Schedule A, well, that's like way out for FY12. But as I pointed out, it looks good for FY13, the way we got these procedures in place for the reconciliations and what have you. I won't have to spend hopefully too much time and after we finish paying the last bills in July, and hope to have the balance sheet in by September 30th and Schedule A by October 31st of 14.
Okay, how about, not that they're really, what about the current Schedule A?
I'm bringing that to Florida with me, but I'll have it by the 22nd.
It needs to be to the state before the 22nd.
Yeah, yeah, well, that gets sent electronically. Yeah, my wife and I are going to Florida next Monday for a couple of weeks. And like I've done in years past, I usually mail down ahead of time a box of stuff from Hat, to town of Hatfield stuff. But I'm just going to have Schedule A this year. And I, that one isn't, again, there's a dash, just a dash of procrastination, more than a dash. If I can just sit down with that and work on it only, it only takes like maybe a few days, hopefully.
Well, you're going to have it before the 22nd because as you saw from Department of Revenue, that's critical to a bunch of other things.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
How about the sewer and ice, excuse me, the snow and ice report?
Oh, that's the first thing I send, like I send that in like August, oh yeah, last, oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's okay, balance sheet, current balance sheet?
Some of it I sent electronically to Terry and I talked with him over the weekend. I bothered him at home, but he doesn't mind, he's a good guy, he's very helpful. But he's going to Florida next week also for one week. But hopefully he gets started on it this week and get it within the next week or two.
Free cash certification?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Oh, is it? Hasn't been certified yet, no. It should be at least, at least 445, it's not going to be more than that.
When's it going to be certified?
We need to know when it's going to be certified.
Well, I'll ask Terry when I get the.
Have you done everything you need that's in?
It's not all in there, I've got some, I can't send electronically, I'm going down to see him probably tomorrow to bring the final papers.
Okay, so it's imminent.
But he's not going to be there next week, so I'll ask him if he, if he thinks it might be the week after he gets back.
So within two weeks?
Let's say right now, within two weeks from, yeah. Well, in two weeks, this week and then his next week, he's not there. So it'd be a week after that.
So roughly you're looking at first part of March?
Yeah, yeah, for free cash, yeah. Because I'm coming back the 13th, hopefully with a completed Schedule A. If not, I'll spruce up my resume.
How about, back to, you mentioned the internal management control program, you've got a draft on that? You going to share that with us so I can see that soon?
Yeah, I'll get a copy to you.
Once projected completion on the accounting and finance policy manual.
I'll have to begin finishing that up after I finish Schedule A.
No, I understand. This is something that's been around since 2007 or eight?
Way back, yes, yes.
It's like I get concerned when I hear halfway, when I know the dates.
Yeah, halfway there. Well, can I say another two months?
All right. Okay.
The latter part of April. Fortunately, fortunately, these, stuff like this doesn't have to be done every year, so once.
And once it's done, it's done.
Yeah, right, except, except for the like monitoring portion of it.
I understand. Is that it, Mike?
Yeah, so how many meetings do you have a month? One, two?
Two usually.
We just had to have a special one to do the accounting manual and the IMC and free cash and Schedule A. Get these things done.
Well, for now, why don't we say if there's a second one in April, I mean, and hopefully I'll have it by then. If I have it sooner, April, you know, because I don't even know, start until the middle of March almost.
Okay. It's critical at Schedule A, as you know.
Oh, I, yes, I understand.
And free cash.
Yeah. That's the only question mark on your sheet, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next we have the fiscal year 14 capital and operating budget issues.
Well, we, I think we're in a, we're in a hold here until Paul nails down. We've identified in a previous meeting kind of our way ahead in terms of, and we talked to them. What, after listening to the various groups, the finance committee met on Thursday night. They went through that, I shared that list with them, what we had decided at our meeting. They have a couple of questions about some of them, but I think we're, by and large, we're going to be in sync with them. There's some issues we need to work out, but no major disconnects. But what we desperately need are things like the debt, what debt is going away, what debt would be coming on? What does it look like? We need to see, are we over or under the levy limit? What puts and takes make the tax rate reasonable? So we're kind of in a hold and what I was suggesting is that we meet next Tuesday, just in a working session to go over that. I know Paul, past few days or early, end of last week, was trying to work with Louise in Florida to get some information about some of the debt, talking about refinancing with historic 40-year lows in terms of interest rates. We ought to be looking hard at what debt might we take and refinance at this time and take advantage of that? Bring down our costs. There's a number of things going on, but quite frankly, we don't have anything today to move forward with. So with additional information that Mike, I assume Paul can get from Louise about some of the financing aspects, we ought to be able to repackage the budget and have something hopefully available by next meeting? If we met, say, next week?
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah.
And then take a look at that, and then that would prepare us, out of that, we ought to be able to send something to the finance committee saying, okay, here's where we are now in advance of the five-March meeting with them. So.
The finance, the debt issue is a big one, you know, seeing how, you know. We're waiting to find out whether or not we got that, see whether or not we're going to get the CRF loan for the Water Main Project and, you know, we finally found out that, well, no, we're not getting it. So we needed to find out that to determine, you know, where we were going forward, you know, with bundling the debt, whether it was going to be in or was going to be out. So I know I talked to Louise last week and she's having conversations with our financial manager. So we should have some, we should be able to start nailing that down fairly soon. So that's a real big question, of course, because the other questions out there is, you know, the free cash issue, which I've been waiting on. And, you know, of course, the state budget as well. The governor has presented his budget, but we'll see what the House has to say. So there's still a lot of questions, questions out there.
Well, my proposal for a way ahead is, Paul, take that information he gets from Louise about what debt borrowings in and out, what's coming on, what's going off, and run, run the numbers and then let's see where we are and see what adjustments we might have to make in terms of timing of our capital projects or other issues. And then have that in advance of a meeting next Tuesday and then we forward kind of our position on to finance committee in advance so they'll have something to look at. And then we meet with them on the 5th of March in a joint meeting. Does that sound like a way ahead?
Sounds like a way ahead.
Okay. All right, next we have the warrant articles.
Let's trot through them page by page. Some of this is boilerplate.
Yeah, Article 1 and 2.
Page 2, Article 5. Where did these numbers come from?
These are, these are last year's numbers. These are last year's numbers.
Oh, this is not this year's?
No, no.
I was just.
No, this is, this is the money that has been sitting there for, some of them have been for years, hasn't it?
Oh, wait a minute, oh, okay, no, no, I'm sorry, I was confused.
I mean, like the Bridge Street reconstruction?
Yeah, these are, this came from Louise.
Okay, so this is, these are good numbers?
These are good numbers, yes, yes.
I don't understand Bridge Street reconstruction, 1.4 million sitting somewhere.
No, that was done back in, that was like from 2007.
It was, it says an unissued balance of, I can't, I just.
I mean, was, was there a project?
There was, well, this is going back, I would have to say the 97 up top. This, by the way, is money that has supposedly all these, well, we've got like 1,400,000 that hasn't been used in our account.
There was the authorization to borrow.
Oh, so we're not talking about real money?
No.
Okay, I got excited.
Yeah. I thought some of it was.
I don't think so.
Okay, I think, okay, what this is then is there is appropriation, but not an appropriation. We only appropriated and expended X number of dollars, which was less than what town meeting had authorized. And this is simply an exercise to rescind those unused authorizations.
Right, but I thought she said something about there was also some money.
There is, there is, it's called, remember, I've got that listing, tailings from a variety of projects.
Right.
I might have it handy if, well, there's no sense in trotting through that now. Mike has developed a list of, our town accountant has developed a list of various, what are termed, tailings. Projects have been closed out and X amount of dollars were appropriated for the purpose. Y was obligated and expended, there's a small delta left in a variety of accounts that he's identified that are available for use in a manner like free cash, I guess.
But I mean, that would have to also be put on town meeting.
I think we can act on that.
There's, well, there's two, there's two sets of them and actually, I need to talk to Greg Winters about it. But I think there's one, one set.
Just happen to have it.
Yeah, the 03 funds, I believe that the Selectmen can.
Can do these?
Can do these, they can just close them out or whatever you want to do with them. But I think the capital project tailings, that would need town meeting action.
The capital projects would?
Yeah, yeah.
There's 36 thousand.
Okay, these tailings now, okay, we can close them up.
The projects are done.
They're done.
And there's dollars available.
And there's money left over.
That we can use.
Right.
So it's not a huge amount, but, but it's, yeah, it's, it's just a matter of cleanup anyway, we ought to be doing this. And then you need to deal with these capital project tailings. As I understood it, you could use the capital project tailings for comparable projects of comparable length.
That's my understanding, that's one of the things I need to talk to Greg about.
Okay, so there's another sum there that is potentially available.
Potentially available.
So, anyway, we're, this is just closing out, this is not money available here in Article 5.
No, no.
Article 7? Isn't there some canned language that we typically use? I mean, the, the planning board had drafted the actual mixed-use article and we had the public hearing and there perhaps were some minor changes that were made, but I mean, Bob's right down here working, about to nail that down.
I just need to get together with him to.
But don't we have language like it's on file with the town clerk or something like that? You don't, you don't spell out, I mean, it's about this thick.
Oh, the whole mixed-use bylaw, yeah, okay.
You don't, you don't put the whole bylaw, you'd have a few hundred pages.
No, just talk about the.
It's available for review as on file with the town clerk, some boilerplate. Same thing with the solar bylaw, well, the meeting is tomorrow night, there should be some decision. But all that, although that has nothing to do with the bylaw.
No, no, just waiting for what, what version of the bylaw the planning board is going to put forward.
We ought to pull Bob's chain ways. Article 11, is that, is that the right, we don't have to put in the sum, we just put a sum of money? Okay, and then we put that in?
We can put, yeah, you can put, you know, yeah, yeah. I mean, technically, you can, you know, put in a sum of money and then you, you know, you amend the article from the floor on town meeting. But it's always better to know what the number is ahead of time, but you don't have to have.
Worst case, worst case, if we had it published before.
We could, we could just use a sum of money.
Okay.
Perfectly acceptable.
Ideally, we'll have the, we should have it done by then anyway.
Yes.
Looks like we're, from our earlier discussion, we'll have the money for, the numbers for town hall and the, I think it's 120,000 for the garage left. Overlay surplus, I thought you had proposed, this is, to set aside in the overlay surplus certain amount of funds to cover down the senior work-off program and the veterans' work-off program? And you had proposed to.
No, that's, that's overlay. What overlay surplus is, is money is overlay that.
Oh, this is the excess, I'm sorry, I got that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So the Board of Assessors, certified overlay surplus, I think it was last week or the week before, it's like $41,000. So that is available to use, will not affect the tax rate, it's money that's already there. So, you know, for some of these capital projects, you know, maybe we can use that money. Actually, Phil and I were talking last week about the roof of the highway garage. And, you know, I think we've, we've got $50,000 cost estimate on that. Phil seems to think it's probably going to be less than that, so, you know, maybe we can use overlay surplus for that. So it's available and we just need to figure out what we want to do with it, if anything.
I thought, I thought Mr. Wagner brought in the CPA articles a week or so ago.
Yeah, and this is, this is what he sent me, so this is their first cut.
Okay, but the numbers are blank.
Yeah, well, he's got to get together with the town accountant to figure out what kind of balances they have. But this is their first cut.
Oh, this is, well, this is all stock every year.
Yeah, yeah, well, then the next page goes on to list certain projects that they've already approved and the dollar amounts. He said there's, they will be meeting again because there's some other projects that they have not decided on yet.
I was looking for our windows.
No, it's not here yet.
You saw my exchange with Bob regarding his housing authority article. Okay, well, Article 16, we've still got a bunch of blanks here to fill in and we're racing toward a deadline. Is this something we want to continue to pursue? Just, I realize anyone watching this doesn't know what we're doing, we're looking at a very, very rough preliminary cut at the warrant for town meeting and the articles in that warrant. Some of these things are blank to be filled in with numbers. There's also some substantive things. One of the things we talked about, we're going to talk about it later and not to steal DPW's good news, but for a long period of time, we've had issues with regard to CNS truck traffic in various locations. Couple of things that came out of earlier meetings were, one, they agreed to change their ship-to address, that's somewhat helpful. A second thing, there was some lighting requested, which has been approved and being installed. And second, and third was to put up some signs. And this was kind of a difficult thing in that Department of Transportation, Mass DOT, does not really support putting up signs regarding private activity, private enterprises. Anyway, DPW has worked this through some contacts and DOT has come back to approve two signs regarding truck traffic going to CNS, which should be a big help. So we got, we got that piece and CNS also has agreed to pay for those signs. So we've got the design, the locations of the signs, it's just a matter of executing. There's been one other piece talked about and that is changing the address of CNS. Of course, that's finally up to them, not us. Well, it should be kind of a joint thing because all their documentation will show one address and it's not inexpensive to change that, but one of the things, they're talking about changing this name of the road.
Did you talk to them at all about that?
Well, the initial discussion was, you know, of course, it's going to be costly, they're going to change every invoice and every ship-to and every other thing that they have going on, all the propaganda they. on, all the propaganda there. My recommendation is to take it off the warrant for this year and see how the signage works. I mean, you can always revisit it at a later date. I mean, they're aware of it, and, you know, then you would have, you know, a reason to change that address if the signage isn't working. I mean, they did their part in changing the ship-to address, and we've done our part to go ahead through DOT to get the signage, so let's see how it works for a year.
The other thought in connection with that was, even if you change the signage, your GPS may still show plain road as the most direct route.
I don't see how. I really can't see how.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're down 91...
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my question would be, how can we get that corrected? Does anybody have any clue of how to get it corrected?
What, what?
As far as the mapping through a GPS system.
Oh, well.
Well, the only thing you could do is to, you know...
I mean, it's over satellite.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't, you can't do that.
Because number one, I, I, I mean, the truck, I mean, if, most of these truck drivers, they should have a truck GPS, number one. So, they're not going under low bridges, you know?
Underpasses.
Underpasses and everything else. A bridge, bridge waits. I mean, as is now, I mean, Chestnut Street Bridge is, is posted by the state. I mean, the GPS should correct that, but, I mean, they have updates that you can put in, but I don't know if people do it or not. I have no idea.
Well, the question here is, do we want to put this on, well, we need coordination with CNS, in all events, if we're gonna pursue it. The question is, do we think it still has value? Well, I mean, we won't have to decide today, but...
Right. Like, you know, Phil says, maybe we just hold off on it, see what the signage does. We can try that.
Okay. I agree with that, too. So, let's just defer this one.
Okay.
What do you need from, from folks to complete these other, like, from Phil? What do you, do you need some language from Phil for all these capital items?
I think, I've got, you know, I've got all the numbers, so, you know, I just, as I was working on this, I just wanted to, you know...
Put placeholders?
Yeah, yeah, just placeholders. I don't need anything else. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to forget about them.
Okay. And Article 18?
I think that's all set.
Okay, all set. 19, is there still a question as to what goes in there?
Yeah, I just need to coordinate with Bill O'Neill, but I know, I think, I think the basic issue is, number one, who issues the permit, and number two, who's the enforcement authority on this? The, the bylaw that was passed was silent on both those issues, so it makes it rather worthless, actually. So, but I need to coordinate with him on that.
Okay. Well, you, you have, the town clerk has the Attorney General's comments on the...
Right, well, I, I have the comments.
Okay, which drive whatever we need to change.
Yeah.
What about?
Article 20?
20, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just got an email from the town clerk last week, and, because this has been a question, because there were some big changes in the animal control legislation last summer, in whether or not this was gonna affect our local bylaws. One of the changes now is that fines that are issued by the animal control officer can be no less than $50. I looked through our bylaw, and I didn't, I didn't see anywhere where that issue was even addressed. So, Louise was gonna look into it and get back to me, but it, it looks to me like, yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to amend the bylaw somehow or another.
Okay, so that's still open, you're working out with Louise. The other thing is, what, what did, what did Bill O'Neill have as a suggestion to address the problem that we have here in town about one neighbor?
Oh, well, yeah, he had, I mean, he had a couple of options, you know?
He had some bylaw options.
Yeah, he had some bylaw options, which I have not included in here yet.
So, let's, let's, let's surface those before we finalize, decide whether or not we're gonna put them in.
I know, one of them, one of them dealt with having setbacks for animals.
Let's just take a look.
Side yards, and, and then there was another one that talked about the right-to-farm bylaw that is currently in place.
Amending that.
Amending that, so that it would only apply, apply to commercial farming, and not to hobby farming. Yeah, in, you know, this instance with the rooster, it doesn't, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's a typical farm animal, but from my understanding, it's actually, it's actually a pet.
Yeah.
So, those are, those are a couple, a couple of things that he drafted some language on, and, you know, so it, but I...
I don't know, personally, I don't know if I'd want to go that far, because, I mean, some people may want a half a dozen chickens in their, in their yard. You see them everywhere, you know?
Yeah. Oh, I know, I know, I know.
And if we're gonna start, if we're gonna start telling people they can't do it...
No, we're not saying that.
No.
No, we're not saying that.
You know, because they're not full-time farmers, I, I don't really want to, rather than go down that road if we can help it.
Yeah, yeah. Because some of the things we're talking about here is, you know, zoning amendments, so that should probably really come from the planning board.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I would just bring you back what Bill had proposed, and I can see where we go, if anywhere. So, we got a lot of work to do on these, to clean them up and finalizing them. We need to also look at sequencing.
Yeah.
Some of these, it makes, some of these things make better sense when they're one behind another. And then, schedule's another thing, when all these things, I don't have the master schedule here, but I know they're, they're supposed to be all in by now.
Hmm.
So, you're not crushed at the last minute.
And there were, there were a couple of things that we were talking about that I pulled out of here. One of them was the medical marijuana issue, which I believe...
Well, yeah, I had an exchange with Chair of Board of Health and Planning Board, and in fact, I talked to Bob this morning. And Board of Health supposedly is gonna have some discussion of that at their next meeting.
Okay.
So, see what comes out of that. And, for folks listening, what it is, there was an initiative passed about medical marijuana use, and there's some issues about establishing local controls, as to where things might be best sighted. And many of the restrictions or guidance used for cigarette sales is also applicable to this, so it can be used as a model. Anyway, a number of communities are looking at this, where it might, where such activities might be best sighted if they come to, to town. We're taking a look at it.
All right. Next, we have...
Oh, yeah.
Classification Management Committee, Paul?
Yeah, I just, we sent out letters to the folks who worked on the classification plan for the town last spring. So, these just went out last week. So, I haven't, you know, heard back from anybody yet. Of course, Penny Geis was one of those individuals. She's moved out of town, so we didn't send one to her, but I think from our last discussion, there was, consensus was that if all the four people that we sent letters to, you know, were willing to serve, then, then I would be the fifth individual on the committee, which, which actually makes sense to me. So, we'll see where, where, how that pans out.
Okay. Next, we have the CNS truck issue, but I think we'll have the DPW director take care of that, along with the MassWorks application.
We have, the meeting on that is 20, what was the date, 25th?
25th.
25th. Just for folks, one of the, we had a MassWorks grant request for water and sewer work along with 5 and 10. We did not, it was not supported, and we have a debrief from Head of MassWorks, Virginia Maguire, scheduled for the 25th of, of this month. See how we might strengthen our application.
Is Peter Colcock coming to that meeting, too?
He's aware of it. Paul's kept him in the loop. Last time he did come, whether he comes this time, I'm, we're not, we're not certain, but we're pressing on with the 25th, 1 o'clock.
Okay. Board of Schedule, Board of Selectment Schedule with the Finance Committee, we've already got that.
5 March. Are we agreed for next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, yep.
Uh, I don't know, 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock is fine.
Just a working group.
Yep.
Next Tuesday at 8 o'clock.
Yep.
For us. And the focus is budget, period. Getting our stuff together.
Next, we have the ambulance abatements.
Yeah, it's, it's just January that needs to be abated. And just for your information, I've, I've been trying to get abatement policies, and I talked to someone in Amherst a while back, and they were supposed to send it to me, and they never did. And I got back in touch with them, and they said, oh, we don't have, we don't have it in electronic form, but I'll send you this. So, this is, these are the ambulance waiver policies from the town of Medway, so at least it's, it's someplace to, someplace to start. I haven't really even looked at them yet, but...
Let's not try to close on it today, but let's, play ahead. I move to approve adjustment of the ambulance billing, any amount of $984.28, $984.28 for the month of January 2013.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, we have DPW Director.
Yes, in your packet, there's a water and sewer abatement for Kathleen McCoy. What happened there is that the meter jumped, one of the zeros jumped to a 1, that generated the amount. As you can see in the past, it's only been a minimal charge, and she had over a $1,000 bill, so I'm recommending that the abatement be granted in the amount of $919.80.
I move to approve, approve water and sewer abatement for 62 Main Street, Building 5, Unit 3, as submitted for any amount of $919.80.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And just to follow up on that, is that we've pulled the meter out of that unit and sent it to the company, and they've replaced it, so...
So, it, is that mechanical? I'm assuming it's a mechanical operation in there?
Yeah, so what happened is when the meter went to change, it tripped that one number to a 1 instead of a 0, and generated the prop.
Spent a lot of water quick. All right, what else do you have?
The only other thing is I want to, you know, give congrats, and, you know, for all the hard work the guys did over the blizzard. I think that they were out there, you know, banging their heads around, and I think that the town was one of the better ones within the district. I did have the unfortunate opportunity to drive elsewhere, and, you know, the Hatfield roads were by far one of the best around, so I just want to thank them for all their hard work and putting in the long hours.
We did have a couple people comment that the roads were in very good shape early in the morning, so, again, congratulations to all of you. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to say something like that in the introductory remarks. A few other things. The Maya's loss control inspection report, the answers were due up back to Maya on the 18th. Have we answered?
Yes, yes, yes.
Corrective action on the...
Yeah, very minimal. We cleaned up most of it that was on that report, so...
Okay, have, have we answered Maya?
We're gonna answer them now. Now that everything is just about done, there's a couple of things that weren't, you know, accomplished, but...
Well, you can just give a projected completion date on the ones that aren't done, but just close it out. Tree program with CPA, are we on track with them now?
We're on track. The letter's going out this week.
Okay, and how are managing that?
Yes.
Mr. Quadro's request on plowing from Mountain Street to 309 Rocks Road?
Yes, that was answered through Paul's efforts and myself. I did meet with Williamsburg, and they have no problem with him doing the street, so we didn't want to change the agreement that's in place, so we're just giving him, you know, our blessing that he can take care of the road as needed. But we don't want to change their agreement just in case something changes hands up there. We want to keep that agreement in, you know, in place in case, you know, Williamsburg has to go back there to plow that road. So, we don't want to change the agreement, and that's the understanding that.
Okay, so it's not an handshake, but we're okay?
Yes. The agreement since, you know, the agreement stays as is, and he can take his grader out in the road and take care of it for him.
He came to see me last week, and I said, and I told him, you know, that we don't have a problem, Williamsburg doesn't have a problem. You know, we're not gonna officially change the agreement, but, you know, you know, reliability issues, but, you know, so, so we're fine with it. So, he was happy.
Okay.
There we are.
That's right.
All right. Anything else? You good?
We want to talk about equipment repair, and, or do you want to do that some other time?
Well, as far as...
Vehicles, and, you can do it some other time, I don't...
Well, due to all the emails going out, and there's a couple of documents that people should have read, that were just generated within the last day or two. I think that maybe, can we do it at the working session, I guess?
All right, sure. Yeah, I was gonna kind of suggest...
You know, because I'd like to run that by our mechanic.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
To see if he's comfortable with.
All right. And, and Bill, we promised to engage Bill.
Yep, we did promise Bill that. He was gonna look it over, too, so... So, put that on the agenda for...
Mm-hmm. Two things.
Working session. Okay, Paul, I guess, what do you have for us?
All right. Just a few things. I put some information in the packet there, an email from Peregus, and then some information from the Hampshire Cog regarding their IT program. Our current contract with Peregus for IT support expires the end of this month. And under our old contract with them, it was, you know, it was a, it was a good deal for the town. And I know the town had looked into possibly joining with HCOG there a while back, and found that, you know, staying with the current agreement was, was more beneficial. But they don't offer that type of contract anymore, and based on my conversations with Peregus and with HCOG, it seems like we will do better if we join the HCOG IT program rather than go on our own. I did, there was some confusion, because the information that I had gotten from HCOG was that their, the normal contract, contract, as they call it, is $105 an hour, and under the Hampshire IT contract is $82 an hour, though the email that I got from Peregus, they quoted $90 an hour. So, I, I asked them about that, and she explained that the $105 an hour was for, if you were a new, a new client, and the $90 if you were a, you know, recurring client. So, staying, or going with Hampshire IT, still gonna save us money, and... Um, and the other good thing about this is, yeah, the more communities join the Hampshire IT, the rate is gonna go down. Um, so actually, as it stands now, uh, with the Hampshire IT program, it's, it's the Hampshire Cog and the Town of Hadley, that, that's, it's a pretty new program, so, uh, we will be the third entity to join, and hopefully other, you know, communities will go into...
I think West Hampton, I was, I was at a meeting last week, and they're talking about, and there's a couple other communities looking at it as well.
It seems like the way to go, and, uh...
As long as it's not costing us more.
No, it should cost us less. Uh, so I had, um, the H-Cog draw up, uh, a contract for us, um, and I've had, uh, Town Council review it, and he's fine with it, so, um, this being the last meeting before, uh, well, no, I guess not necessarily, uh, March first, we do have a contract that we, that is ready for signatures.
Uh, what's the period of the contract?
Um...
Are we doing this one year at a time?
One year, one year. Yes.
What's, can we, uh, withdraw if there's a
Yeah, there's...
With notice?
Yeah, there's, um...
If, if there's a problem?
Oh, yeah.
And, and one other question, why are, maybe Keith's got the answer to this as well as anyone. What's our service like been, uh, what's it been like with Peregus? We had, you know, a year ago, or a year and a half ago, some significant problems with our computers here, and, and we were better off than the, the H-Cog program at the time, cause essentially we had unlimited calls and service, whereas here it's, each time you call, you get, you get a bill.
I think each time you call, you get a bill outside of certain hours, if people are calling before certain hours.
Well, we had, we had all kinds of problems with Peregus earlier. Have they gone away? Because the, the H-Cog program is with Peregus as well.
I think that was over the phone line, wasn't it?
Oh, oh.
Didn't we have an issue with that?
I just don't know what an alternative would be.
Well, has the service from Peregus, is it meeting your expectations?
I think they're not responsive.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I was, uh...
All right. We were having problems with that.
I was having, I was having some problems with them last summer, being non-responsive, um, and actually, in, in talking with, um, uh, the gentleman at H-Cog, they were noticing the same thing.
Frank Mertes?
Yes. Um, that has been resolved. Um, our, our service rep, Scott, um, you know, he had told me a while back, and this, so this was late in the summer, that, um, they had hired a new individual.
Okay.
I said, so is he replacing someone, or is this in addition to? Said it's in addition to. Said, oh, and they were just, you know, they were, they needed to hire more staff, and they did.
Okay.
So they've been, they've been very responsive lately.
Okay.
I've had no problems with them at all.
All right.
So, anyways, yes, there's a severability clause in here, um, and it says that, um, as set forth in the Peregus agreement, the town may discontinue participation in the Hampshire IT program upon thirty days prior written notice to H-Cog and the contractor.
Okay. Okay. I, I move to approve the contract with Town of Hatfield and Peregus, as submitted.
All second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. This is a signature thing for later.
Um, yeah, just to, you know, a quick update here on, on the renovation project, so we've already discussed this earlier, but more for the sake of, uh, people who are listening to the meeting. The town hall renovations are, are proceeding, um, the schematic designs have, have been approved, uh, the architect is, is moving ahead with construction documents. Um, so we are looking to get that project out to bid around the first of April. Um, one, a couple of things that have come to light, uh, in the process...
And that's phase one, i.e. what was approved at last town meeting, the funding for.
Funding for, yeah, so...
That's, that's phase one, so build out of some offices in the current gym.
Build out some offices and handicap bathrooms, essentially. Um, uh, we do not have enough money to do the elevator project, um, that needs to be dealt with down the road.
In phase two.
In phase two. Uh, but one thing that has come to light is that, uh, we really need to replace all the windows in the, in the former gym area before we can really proceed with construction, so we're, we're proceeding with that, though we haven't got the funding for it yet, but we do have an application into, uh, the Community Preservation Committee to fund that project, so hopefully that will take place.
Which will have to also go to Town of Florida.
Yes. Um, the other thing that has come to light recently is that, uh, there's been a question about, you know, are we gonna have to sprinkler this building or not? Um, we don't have to do it in phase one, you know, there isn't enough, uh, renovation activity, uh, occurring that would trigger that, however, um, if and when the elevator project goes in, it will trigger that. Um, so the, the elevator project now, uh, is coupled with a sprinkler system, which, um, we're, we're talking, you know, another two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars to, uh, install that kind of a system in the town hall. So that is where the town hall renovations are, um, I think, you know, and we're still looking at a substantial completion date, you know, in, in, I'd probably, probably October, uh, at this stage of the game.
For phase one.
For phase one. On the garage renovations, uh, once again, uh...
And just for folks, we're packaging up something for town meeting on the phase two that we can talk about here, the, the elevator, the, uh, new ADA compliant entry, HVAC look, and the fire suppression.
Yeah, and likewise with the garage renovations, the schematic designs have all been approved, uh, the architect is, uh, moving ahead with, uh, construction documents, and once again, we're looking to, uh, have that project go out to bid, uh, around, around the first of April. So everything's moving, um, and, uh, we'll see how the bids come in. Um, on the center school project, actually, we've already covered that, cause all I wanted to mention was about the public hearing on March nineteenth, and the need to update our community development strategy, um, and applying for funds to, uh, do a study on the center school, to find out the, uh, what the best use of that building might be.
And the associated costs with, make it compliant and fit, that best use.
So that's all I have.
Cable Committee?
Yep, I see we have
And, uh, hiring of a manager, of where, are we, are we doing on that?
Oh, oh, yeah, well, we've got a, um, got that resignation as well.
Yes, we'll deal with it.
Yeah. Uh, we had, uh, two applications for the, um, station manager.
Right.
Um, John Novak being one of them, and Tyler Geis being the other, um, and, uh, yeah, no official action has taken, been taken on that yet.
Okay, so...
But that will happen probably today.
Okay. Uh, you had a resignation, uh...
Yep.
Move to accept the resignation of Mr. Paul DuVall from the Cable Access Committee?
All second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Paul, if you could just send him a, a note, just thanking him
Thank you, Leonard.
For his time served. We appreciate it.
Uh, there was a, a note in here from PVPC about the Hatfield profile, asking for some updates before the fifteenth. We've phoned that out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's also something in there, asks if we want copies, and yes, we do want copies when they, when they finally publish it. Uh, and just, uh, close the loop on something that's been pending for a few years. Uh, when town meeting approved the CPA article to restore the front of the congregational church, there was supposed to be a preservation restriction, uh, agreement, uh, entered on the, on the title, and that's finally been completed. Bless and learn, next time we do that before they do the work, not, not after they do the work. But I, I mentioned, uh, in introduction, we have a number of appointments coming up, various committees and, and boards. Are, are those out there? Do folks know what's, on the website, what's available? Does, does John have it for the?
There's some things on it now.
There's a long list of...
Vacancies?
These are to come back, yeah, to come back up for
I just have
Appointment and reappointment.
There's, uh, about six or seven vacancies that Louise gave me.
Well, why don't you, why don't you make sure somewhere we get these things published so folks know what, what opportunities are available? Now, we've gone back to folks that are encumbering some of these positions, asking if they're still interested, but other parties may be interested as well and wanna be considered, so it's an opportunity to participate if they choose, but they need to know what's available. So one way or another, get it out. That's all I had.
All right.
And I did provide you some comment on the CDC, CDS this weekend.
Right, okay, good. All right, so we will be meeting next Tuesday, eight o'clock? And just go over the financial
Yeah, and, and this
Our financial plan, hopefully it's gonna work.
It's got to.
One way or the other.
I love it. We have town meeting, I love it. You have to have it so it fits. We finally get it closed.
Okay, do I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.